Well, we'll call this meeting door. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, we'll call please.
Trustee Pauling.
Here.
Trustee Laffin.
Here.
Clerk Flavich here.
Treasurer Ellery Summers here.
Trustee Crow.
Here.
Trustee Reiner.
Here.
Supervisor Skibby.
Here. Uh, moving forward to the adoption of the agenda, are there any corrections, changes to the agenda as presented? Otherwise, I've entertained a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion on the table to approve the agenda as presented as their support. Support, it's been moved and supported for their discussion. Yes, trustee Ryan.
Just, I just did. I was about almost all day. And so I didn't have the opportunity. And I just came yesterday, so I think the process is procedures say we're supposed to get the agenda. Couple, three days before, I think it's three days before, before the meeting, so I just.
This was a special meeting.
I know, which is a special meeting was only I understood to be for the budget stuff, so I was planning only to have to review and be ready for budget.
We have eight, we have to have everything out eighteen hours before a special meeting.
I understand you have to give notice eighteen hours before a special meeting, but we're usually, we're doing uh, stuff on this agenda that's regular business.
Well, yeah, and I, I kind of spoke to you before the meeting, but uh.
I understand what you said.
Is there any other discussion? Saying no, we, uh, all those in favor of adopting the agendas presented signify by saying I.
I.
I oppose the same. Uh, this is the first opportunity for public comment, if there's any public comment regarding uh, the purpose of the meeting, items one through five. Uh, please state your name for the record. Having none in person, one online. This is the first opportunity for public comment to discuss uh, agenda items. Seeing no public comment will move forward to the purpose of the meeting, uh, the first item of business are budget adjustments, uh. There was actually, I woke up in a night panic, uh, so there's a uh, reprint with a handwritten GL uh, that was set before you uh, before this meeting, it's uh, a correction to the um, copy that's in, uh, the realization that we actually have a standalone GL which is the eight zero five zero zero that is directly associated with engineering. That is the only change, instead of putting it towards professional and contractual services, that that kind of muddies uh, our audit trail. Uh, would be best of putting that forty thousand dollar contribution to eight zero five zero 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 in the waterfront, uh, which is representative of engineer. With that being said, I've entertained a motion to move forward with the budget adjustments as presented.
I'll make that motion.
There's a motion on the table, is there support? It's been moved and supported, uh, further discussion.
I don't see eight oh five on the.
Yeah, cuz on that, if it's not a used GL, it doesn't print, so that's, that's the format, I was kind of talking with Russ, in that format, in the Excel format, it skews the typical general ledger format where everything's laid out, so.
Okay.
We can produce that, but it is, like I said, instead of pooling that forty thousand dollars into professional contractual services, of which it would have fit in that GL, this is a site-specific engineering task, so it'd be clear for auditing purposes. Oh, we have a motion and support on the table, any further discussion?
We'll call please.
Clerk Flavich, yes, treasurer Ellery Summers.
Yes.
Trustee Crow.
Yes.
Trustee Reiner.
Yes.
Trustee Pauling.
Yes.
Trustee Laffin.
Yes.
Supervisor Skibby.
Yes. And then moving forward to the next item of business is a proposal uh, for engineering services uh, through uh, Fleyce and Vandenbrink. This is for, and Miss Wynn unfortunately is unavailable today, she got caught up in um, a different situation that required her attention, so I told her that I can probably address this matter in its entirety, uh, this is directly correlated to what this board has already been had brought forth, which was the intent to apply through Eagle. That intent to imply had two different mechanisms, uh, one uh, for, and both are from the state revolving fund, one for drinking water and one for clean water. Um, the clean water, although we, we filed the I T A for both, uh, the clean water, which is a, for sewer. Um, that the mechanisms and the timeline uh, for capture uh, were April fifteenth, which was literally not attainable. Um, so at this point in time, we, we've dropped that smaller ass, which was three and a half million dollars until the next funding round, when we actually have available time to, to do it appropriately. What we are focusing is the I T A for the drinking water side, which are uh, estimated total project costs on the drinking water side uh, is fifteen point eight million dollars. Um, this is a very uh, complex um, ass, uh, it encompasses uh, twenty-six hundred service line replacements, which is every single service line in the township. Uh, it also encompasses uh, main uh, increase in size uh, for the residential neighborhood of uh, Princeton Sunset and Partridge. Uh, it also includes uh, twenty-three south water tower for capacity, as well as the uh, main uh, looped main completion on South Partridge Point uh, to the east end to the west, uh, that is a dead-end system on uh, twenty or on South Partridge Point. So this is a very comprehensive ass, uh, we've gone through the first uh, primary battery of uh, interviews with Eagle as terms of vetting this uh, proposal, and we got stellar reviews um, with what our score would be thus far. So when you look at the engineering scope, um, which is before you, uh, thirty-nine thousand dollars uh, is a considerable amount of money. Um, but anytime when you're looking at utilization of uh, any uh, loan or grant dollars through Eagle, if you break ground on a project, the level of inherent complexity for environmental factors increases a hundredfold. Um, so before you, you have a, a pretty well-laid-out uh, project understanding, now obviously you have the five principal bullet points, this also goes to amp equipment, which will help us improve our system as we move forward. Um, are there any questions about the, the D W S R F, which is the drinking water state revolving fund?
On the, on the first page, last paragraph, it says currently there are no anticipated grant funding for this year's program. So I'm trying to understand, we are, we are, we are trying to move forward on something that, wh- where does the fifteen point eight million coming?
That is not, so you are correct, it, this is not a grant, state revolving fund is a loan, a, a very, it's even a lower rate than USDA rural development, although they both have some pros and cons. Um, so there are no grants, otherwise we would have folded some of these ass into a grant format, that would obviously grants are are a preferred mechanism when and now possible, but with the cycles uh, and the release of this uh, state revolving fund pool, uh, we literally last month had our initial uh, discussion about I T A, and two weeks ago, they gave us a timeline. That's why we looked at both of our assets in a comprehensive of drinking water versus clean water. And when we have a, a drinking water timeline that a rough draft has to be submitted by May fifteenth, that is amazingly tight timeline. The April fifteenth, it, it just wasn't feasible, that, there's not enough hours in that day to, to, to make that happen, so we, we dropped that off, this is now focusing the fifteen point eight million dollars of projects to the state revolving fund, and it's not grant-based.
All right, so then my second question is, i- i- in that same uh, paragraph talks about a, some, some principal forgiveness.
Yep.
We have, I, uh, when it says limited amount of principal forgiveness, any idea what that means?
So in our second uh, battery of uh, vetting, if you will, um, very much like state and federal mechanisms, um, they don't give you the final rule, until usually you're already in it, so there is a level depending on uh, the determination of our uh, economic uh, evaluation, where we stand as a community of uh, funding, basically what is our median household, so. Basically, are we, at what rate are we disadvantaged as a community, et cetera? Um, so some of the ground rules still haven't been brought forward by Eagle and some of the scoring mechanisms as well, so.
Then my third question is, on the proposed fees, there, there is no, uh, there's nothing that would, would allow us to recover any of these costs, this is just a cost of the enterprise fund?
Well, you can do it two different ways, there are some functions with state revolving fund that allow some administrative capture. But then I think really the bigger scale this picture is, especially when we're looking at a, an upfront cost of engineering for thirty-nine thousand to look at nearly free money, would we better, be better off uh, retroactively looking at this expenditure as something that would be best afforded our ARPA monies, our, our SLF RF funds, um, so. Yes, sorry, yes.
If Steve's done.
Are you?
Okay. Uh, so a couple of questions, I raised, one is uh, what, what the forty thousand dollars, since we just got this just before the meeting, what the forty thousand dollars is going to do to our budget, and I assume it's kind of, gonna cause us and put us into a deficit in the budget?
Well, right now, we had, uh, as you saw, the budget adjustments, we're actually, we're weekend fund internally.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, with.
General fund or?
No, this is all water, this is water, this is an enterprise activity, so.
But it is something that could use art before because it is a cost of.
Yep, I just spent another wonderful two hours.
Capital improvement, if you will.
Most, and it's infrastructure.
Yeah.
So that would be.
Now, uh, I have three questions too, apparently.
Wonderful.
Uh, so the second question is, service lines, do those go to the homes or just to a curb?
So in our system, um, our, our, in our water ordinance, our service lines, our affiliated responsibility as a distribution municipality is from the main to the curb stop. Curb stop is all ninety-nine point nine percent of the time within uh, M dot or county road commission right away, that allows us the ability to access fix, et cetera. Um, the homeowner's uh, position is from the curb stop into the home, and then.
Doesn't include that.
Nope, no, this, we don't have to touch that by our, our standards.
If I was under the misunderstanding of, of the fact that uh, service lines go to the home, that's wrong, then it just goes to that curb stop.
It goes, our responsibility.
What do they call that line? The tap in, thank you.
Yeah, it's just a residential tap.
Okay. Um. They have a third question. I'll come back.
Well, I'll entertain norms and I'll. Yes, trustee Pauling.
So basically what this is, is we're applying for a loan that will give us plenty of times plus a very low interest that we normally wouldn't get.
Exactly, this is the first time that I believe that the uh, township, and I, and then correct me if I'm wrong, uh, cuz I don't have the institutional knowledge, I'm sure, and I would be in hopes that the township has in past used state revolving funds, but this will be the first primary project that we've looked to access state revolving funds uh, in the past five years.
It, so the fourth or third question is, then, under our discussions of a wasp, uh, the, uh, this is obviously a system improvement, it'd be part of the assets, then that, should that go forward, uh, it would, the loan and the, and the improvements would go.
But by the language, and correct me if I'm wrong, by the language of that draft agreement, uh, that would be a, a conveyance of responsibility.
Right.
But this is something, no matter how we look at it, we have as a, a right and responsibility as municipality in charge of said infrastructure, is to us to make sure and ensure that, you know, we're not looking at um, being catch, cash-rich in this department, we need to be providing the service that our consumers have always uh, had, so.
And, and improving what they have now, so we.
Well, right now, this is, this is inherent to, and I think Miss Wynn's previous conversation as to when we look at our O and M budget, it's better to actually look and forecast known expenditures in a macro sense, than be chasing our tails spending money on micro problems that just continue to compile.
Well, of course, overall, it costs more to do the.
So this will, this will help with budgeting, this will help with C I P, so, yes.
So according to this schedule, this construction will not start on the project until spring of two thousand twenty-four.
That is.
So we won't be paying out any money until the term of construction and.
No, the forties, we're gonna be paying the thirty-nine.
We're gonna pay thirty, but then.
And that's due within a year, do we get billed monthly for that, or is it a lump for the thirty-nine thousand?
That is a lump.
Okay.
Yeah.
It's due now, okay.
If, if we want to garner fifteen point eight million dollars, then we have to spend a little bit of money to get it done.
So can grant money come in if you.
Grant money, this is, I will, I will say, i- in sense, uh, it's what, been four months since we had F and B Engineering and Brian Rowling, uh, present at our meeting. Uh, he and I uh, have accomplished more in uh, Water Department Engineering, um, looking at various funding mechanisms in the past four months, um, than we've, I think that we've ever been afforded in the near five years. Um, their level of professionalism and his, his knowledge, um, w- we're looking and scoring extremely high in, in this category, uh, and then we also have flexibility, and I think once we get this ball rolling, I'll probably have him attend by Zoom again and kind of give out, cuz it, it is a complex project, it has a lot of moving parts, but it's also allowed by state revolving fund, we can actually schedule and look at how many years this is, we need to plan to get this, this attainable goal, so there's, there's a lot of moving parts, but.
Are you looking for one or two motions today to go forward, I mean, are you looking for a funding motion as well as a, a, uh, uh, agreement to, to take?
I think they're, they're one in the same, but by saying that we would make a motion to this expenditure of thirty-nine thousand, we are committing the fact that we're gonna leverage this thirty-nine thousand in engineering costs to that fifteen point eight million dollars of state revolving.
Yeah, if we don't get it, the project doesn't go any further.
But I think the old adage is, if you don't spend a little money, you gotta spend a little bit to make money, and we're not trying to make, but this is, and we can, we can look retroactively.
Well, it's a loan, it's not.
It's, it's a loan, but we can also look at retroactively, this would fall under the guise of an acceptable expenditure of and utilization of uh, the SLF RF monies.
The thirty-nine.
Yep.
Yeah.
Could, could you talk a little bit about our, what you know about our scoring? If you know anything about the scoring, it sounds like ten of the numbers or whatever look favorable.
Yeah, and they, so this was the initial vetting process, uh, we had with uh, the three principles that would be scoring uh, on a, a Zoom meeting, actually, sorry, Microsoft Teams. Um, it's just wonderful format, um, and all three principal uh, points of contact from Eagle, um, score this roughly extremely high, um, given the consideration which makes us unique and unfortunate at the same time, is that we do not have a lead connection issue in our system. So the state, uh, if, unless we've all been ostriches, um, typically, all the funding mechanisms have favored any system that has led as, as a principle, um, this is uh, something that we're, we're looking at actually leveraging a new argument, because all of our service lines, uh, at least the, the vast majority that are causing our water loss are uh, blue brittle uh, poly C T S line uh, that's become too frail, so I've, I've already countered the argument with EPA utilizing their strengthening mechanisms that microplastics are, 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 are a concern, so that actually affords us a scoring mechanism that it would offset the fact that we do not have lead in our system.
Well, I guess that's where I was gonna go with that, that, I knew that we didn't have any lead, but I knew we had all the plastic that was problematic and could be future problematic.
Yeah.
And so those would essentially all be removed and replaced with copper, copper and so on.
Yep.
Plus, we're, we're gonna have the street costs, right, because we're gonna, the fifteen million.
Yep, so you, you, you have, uh, the, the, the engineering and architectural average per linear foot is two hundred and eighty dollars per linear foot for water main construction projects, and that's all encompassing. So that's just a rough aggregate of cost.
These were, but I'm sorry.
Two hundred and eighty dollars a foot for?
Water main, service lines, taps.
Okay.
I think that raises another question, are we gonna be tearing up the same streets when we go and improve our plumbing system?
Just took it.
Well, and right now, the, the only area within the scope of a project would be the Princeton uh, Sunset and Partridge area. Uh, and I think that's been a conversation I've been urging this board to have for about five years. Cuz that is a dilapidated subdivision, and we've done in previous years, we've done very similar projects with uh, partnerships with the road commission. If we know that they're gonna tear up a road, why not be proactive and replace service lines before they finish the road?
You're talking about sewer system, huh?
No, we're talking about water system.
Okay, but that was the question, the, with the sewer system, do we have to change?
Sewer system is not an issue in that.
We don't have an issue anywhere from that.
No, that's, that, the capacity for the sewer is fine, uh, and then we also have a, a very large uh, sewer listation on Princeton, which then directly force feeds to the city infrastructure, so that entire neighborhood was designed adequately, and they were both designed adequately on the water and the sewer collection side. Uh, but they did not understand, at least on the drinking water side, that the neighborhood would actually grow as fast and at as many single-family homes and residents and, and consumption rates as it ever did, so they met the standard when it was designed in the late seventies. It, it doesn't really meet that standard now, and our concern with this project, and it's not principle to this project, but a, a side note uh, with the increase of uh, the size of mains for distribution is that we actually increased potential fire load, so the I S O rating for those neighbors could actually see a potential margin of decrease because of a higher uh, transmission rate, yeah, flow rate. And I would, Erica, somebody that's been in that business for sixty-two years. Maybe not sixty-two. So any other questions, because like I said, I, I can give you copies of the actual paperwork uh, that we filed uh, for the intent to deploy, uh, intent to apply, um, with a proposed construction start date with uh, ancillary would be October uh, first, twenty twenty-three. Um, and that's, we can always, if, if design and engineering specs have a, a delay, and then we can always, it's, it's shuffling basically by quarter of funding methods. So if that's a little too uh, energetic or too uh, too uh, too early, we can, we can delay by one quarter to make sure that we get everything in line, so there, there's some flexibility with state revolving funds, um, but this is a wonderful opportunity to, for, I think, cents on the dollar.
F and V recommends that you write.
I, we need it, it doesn't matter if it's a wasa, our infrastructure is what should set precedent with the water department.
So this money, these, this fee could come out of the ARPA money?
Yes, yep, yeah, so we can, and I did a, a three-hour webinar uh, yesterday about uh, state and local uh, ARPA monies uh, and how to, and I'll be having a conversation with our auditor, um, we have some options here of how we wanna look at that, whether, because we're a below two million dollar uh, entity, we can do, it's kind of a fast-track mechanism, because we don't have any defined, truly a defined project list yet to submit, which for our April thirtieth reporting date, which I'll be filing on behalf of the township. Um, whether or not we wanna take and rotate it into general fund as loss of revenue, both of them have some, some inherent complexity, so I wanna get some clarification with, I'll probably sit down with Laura, Michelle and our auditor and say, which, this is kind of what our forecast may look like, uh, what would your recommendation be? Um, because we do have some options to, for reporting purposes there.
I may, yeah, just observation, we, our cost overruns in the, whatever you call that contingency or whatever.
Oh, no.
Have been and are gonna continue until this project hopefully gets done, uh. So, like, you know, we can't even obviously accurately predict how much we're gonna spend on an annual basis for that, cuz we went way over this year, so I, I would say, I would make the motion, actually, if you wanna take it as a motion, that we, we fund this with ARPA, uh, assuming, as you've said, it's allowed uh, expenditure, uh, and that we go forward with the thirty-nine thousand dollar fee to F and V for the engineering uh, plant.
Yeah, so we have a motion on the table to utilize thirty-nine thousand of our accrual of nine hundred and fifteen thousand, five hundred and sixty-three dollars from Mark um, for the payment of the engineering cost of thirty-nine thousand to F and V, or it's been moved and supported, further discussion.
Last I knew, the, we'd only received about half of that, nine hundred and some thousand, four hundred and fifty-seven.
Yeah, I, I don't know when the second tranche is being released, I think it's. I didn't, I didn't use that adjective, that what our people on the food chain decided to make it known as, um, I believe, I don't know if it's April one, when they did the second dispersment, but it should be actually coming up sometime between April and June, I'd have to look back at that, so we have a motion and support to move forward with the engineering costs of thirty-nine thousand with utilization of uh, collected ARPA monies, further discussion. Saying none, I will call.
Treasurer Ellery Summers.
Yes.
Trustee Crow.
Yes.
Trustee Reiner.
Yes.
Trustee Pauling.
Yes.
Trustee Laffin.
Yes.
Clerk Flavich, yes, supervisor Skibby.
Yes. Uh, moving forward in the agenda, uh, it's just a quote from Ball Tire or tires, uh, chief, would you like to stand in the podium, just to address any questions?
Yeah, I mean, everybody, Mark Hanson, fire to you. Uh, at a fly separation, in one of the tires, when we originally got the vehicle, Kenny Word recommended that we put the tires on, I said, let me see how much I can get out of these. We've gotten our women out at this point.
Which vehicle?
The, the chief vehicle.
That's the two thousand five Chevy Blazer.
That's correct. So I, I took, while I first took it down to uh, McInerney Chrysler, they have their uh, truck center, across the road there, they checked it, they definitely was a fly separation. They got prices from them, I didn't include them in these, there's a couple hundred dollars more of the, uh, the price of ball tire that I have here. Uh, I got a government price from ball tire, uh, government rate, so probably the best you could get for any place. Uh, but yeah, the nearest closest to, did was seven oh four, oh, sorry, uh, six forty-seven fourteen. So, uh, it's my recommendation that we set those, uh, tire, ball tire out, the chief vehicle, and we're trying to get that ready to have inspections out here uh, as a first response vehicle, so we can make a movement on the sale of our ambulance.
So we have a recommendation from Chief Hanson, uh, to move forward with the purchase of uh, new tires for C one at the cost of five hundred and seventeen dollars and sixteen cents, and I would uh, make the assumption that you're putting that on your vehicle maintenance, chief.
That's right.
Which would be uh, two oh five, uh, three, three, six, nine, three, eight, zero, zero, zero. And there are adequate funds in that GL.
For this this year?
Yes.
So this will be before April one?
It'll be today if you want that, right?
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion on the table to move forward with the recommendation of uh, tires purchased for, at the tune of uh, five hundred and seventeen dollars and sixteen cents. Since it's, it's been moved and supported, further discussion, yes, trustee.
I just have a question, chief.
Sure.
This was a free vehicle that was given to us.
That's correct.
So how much have we spent on that free vehicle so far?
Basically, I think we put into that vehicle's brakes, uh, when we first got in the vehicle, we put brakes on.
Was that sixteen hundred dollars?
We had a, that first initial, it's pretty comprehensive, so.
We can get you a number on that, Norm.
It's just a roundhouse, right?
Twenty-one hundred with this expenditure minus gas and fuel, uh, twenty-two hundred dollars.
Sounds all right, I, I certainly would have those numbers, numbers available for you.
It's, we get. Yeah, no.
It just seems like every time we come to media work, we're spending money, this vehicle keeps coming up with office.
Fair question. We have a motion and support, further discussion. Seeing none, roll companies.
Trustee Crowell?
Yes.
Trustee Reiner?
Yes.
Trustee Polly?
Yes.
Trustee Latta?
Yeah.
Clerk Plavich, yes. Treasure Ellery Summers?
Yes.
Supervisor Skippy?
Yes. Thank you, too. Uh, moving forward, uh, two items, we'll do it independently. Um, we have uh. Two retirements, I think everybody's been brought up to speed, but we'll do them uh independently, um, which is a little bit uh somewhat silly. Uh, to to allow them to retire, but uh, I that's basically by board vote, what we're saying.
Um, we have the option to say no?
We've actually been spitballing that one internally, um, and it didn't end well. Um, so I would entertain a motion to accept uh the letter of retirement from head assessor Chris Lewis.
Make that motion.
We have a motion on the table to accept uh the letter of retirement of Chris Lewis effective April one. Is there support?
My support was regret, like Chris, and I think he did a usually good job for us.
But I I would wholeheartedly agree. So we have a motion and support to accept the letter of uh retirement of Mr. Lewis. Further conversation. Seeing none, uh, all those in favor of accepting his letter of retirement, signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose the same. Well, let him retire. Now, moving forward to the second half of that, we also received a letter of retirement from Jenny Zeeman. Uh, Mr. Lewis's administrative assistant uh of twenty-five years as well. Um, do we have a motion to accept her letter of retirement?
I'll make that motion.
Somebody, motion and support on the table by Cash and then Laura, uh, further conversation.
I just missed uh, missed your smiling face here.
We all are.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, most definitely. Um, all those in favor of receiving and filing her letter of retirement. Signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose the same. You know?
Can I ask just a quick question?
Yes.
So are they actually working the first or?
Yes.
Okay, so that's their last day in the office.
Yes. Uh, moving forward, um, is the last item of new business, um, which is a recommendation out of the. Personnel committee uh that we worked on for three, three solid months, once we uh. Uh, received uh the intent to retire uh from internal capacities. Uh, then uh, we also included uh our field assessor and this entire process. Um, and it would be uh, long and short, a recommendation of the personnel committee uh to move forward with. Uh, a contract for services with Berg Assessing and Consulting.
Can you explain the numbers, too?
Uh, sure.
Come comparable?
No. And well.
Do you have a crazy spreadsheet?
Yes, you have a crazy spreadsheet, because. Um, comparable, unfortunately, no. Um, outside of just the numbers, which she'll uh. Clerk Plavich will clarify momentarily, is um, a timeline, a timeline that we've. Unfortunately, due to staffing issues in that department of no direct fault of anyone, is that we have. And maybe never have in the history of the township, uh, an assessment role that has been inspected within five years. Of inspection ever. Um, this is a a similar uh scenario uh that in uh last year, the year previous, uh, the city actually took this role. Because our assessing role um is our income. And if we don't have properties assessed appropriately. I I hate to think of how many dollars we're stepping over to pick up that.
But but before we get into that, I just wanted to know the difference between. Whatever.
Okay, well, and and Michelle's got her wonderful spreadsheet.
You know, how much is the contract going to cost compared to how much it has been costing us? Just just based on what's been done.
What we have been doing with an assessor, a field person, administrative assistant, we've been getting eight percent.
Sixty-eight percent.
A year inspected. The state recommends twenty.
I I get that.
So to get us up to twenty, in the first year, it would cost two hundred and forty-one thousand. Because we would need two field inspectors, an administrative assistant, an assessor, and part-time summer help.
And was that with?
But that's not where we're paying, Bur, right?
Berg's contract is for two fifteen, I think.
Oh, or did I miss something?
Well, you must have looked at the same thing. One of my questions is going to be, in addition to the hundred and twenty thousand dollar fee. Then there was the inspection and dem addendum that had a sixty dollars per parcel. And so that's was going to be my question.
Uh, between residential and commercial, I want to say that we have seven thousand parcels were. Yeah.
Seven thousand that haven't been assessed in the last five years?
Uh, trust me, Reiner, we have property cards that probably haven't been re-inspected in fifteen to twenty years.
Yeah, that, I understand, but.
There's.
But to get us up into the five year mark.
Yeah.
So we're going to try to.
Twenty percent of that a year.
Yeah.
The two forty-one was.
Two fifteen.
Yeah.
So, so outside of. Building inspections and those sorts of things, so, so if somebody were to build, add on a garage or a storage building or an addition or something like that. Then that, that piece of property would essentially have been, have been reassessed at that time. And so we can probably. Back though, uh, out of however many those are for the first.
Oh, yeah.
Several years.
Once, it's similar to like uh the topic that we discussed with the twenty-six hundred service lines. In the past few years, we've replaced a few hundred of those. So there's inherently going to be some that have already been updated. But in this regard, you're you're right. You have, by pulling a a building permit. Um, because we utilize B S and A in both departments, there are actually open lines of communication between assessing and building. So if a building permit is pulled, then that puts a docket on our assessing department's desk to go, hey. This permit's pulled for these improvements, which then affords our assessing uh capabilities to reassess, reassess the entire property. Um, the fact of the matter is that we just don't have, and even with the proposals internal, we don't have the means or the staff. There's to attain a twenty percent level. Um, and this is something that. Uh, Mr. Berg and his company uh have basically, kind of, I don't know if, with the exception of maybe Austin Township and Sandborne Township. That there's another, outside of those two townships, I don't think that there's another municipality in this entire county that does it internal anymore. Because.
Well, they're hard to find.
So, so on the addendum. We have the sixty dollars per parcel, is it appears to be a flat rate per parcel. And then any additional work, I I presume that needs to be done by way of reassessing. Sending out mail, et cetera, et cetera, this buildup on the back sheet. So the sixty dollars is a flat fee. Plus whatever additional expenses they might incur uh sending out. Based upon this, this, this recoverable cost allocation.
Yeah, and then that's also kind of correlated to the miscellaneous costs in the contract, which would be ten thousand, that two hundred and fifteen thousand. To eat some of that. So we know that we have projected a potential uptick in legal expense, because tax tribunal cases uh will be. Um, handled, as Tim's been in the mix before, but I mean, there's, there's slight upticks in other.
And there haven't been any of those.
How many did he have this year?
Oh, probably four or five, and um, yeah, that'll be a cost savings, because Alan's qualified to handle these without legal assistance.
And so, as I look through this agreement, whi- which actually was triggered from the sixty dollars for a parcel. I noticed on item uh three, service to the provider, uh, bullet point three. Uh, determine true market value performance, uh, appraisals and calculate assessed value of property in the municipality. So I I I presume that that is going to mean that uh all properties, all parcels. Uh, as they are re-inspected, are they brought up to the current true market value? Uh, because it's a little bit of an artificial value right now.
But that's neither everything that we've appraised, or not appraised, but have assessed in this time. The the sales numbers, yeah, are are fluctuating, quote unquote, what everybody would think is real numbers. When you look at uh used car sales of twenty-seven percent inflation. Obviously, there's a misnomer, which has an impact to sales studies of, I think we've seen a rough aggregate of upwards on average, like thirty percent above basket. Price, even in our own, so it does play with those numbers, but we, you can't just look retroactively and say, well, this was what the real market.
Yeah, so I understand. So, so I guess ultimately what I'm wondering. Is let's, let's just for number sake, say we have a a piece of property with a, with a, with a true market value currently, let's say a hundred thousand. And, and the assessor comes in and says, probably close to a hundred and fifty thousand. Then the tax role is adjusted accordingly, and the tax burden up to the property owner goes up accordingly.
So, yes, to, to, well, so we just had March board review. So this is going to be something that I think we as an entire board have to, to really come to the realization of, of what that deficiency is in this department. As we had uh several appointments that were in disagreement with their, their assess and their taxable values. Well, what we found is that, well, one, they made a significant amount of improvements to the property. And maybe over the span of twenty years, that are just now being because of a permit being re-inspected.
Or a sale.
Or a sale. So the state, the state puts values to all that. That's just a function of assessing. So sales, you look at particular neighborhoods, and if sales studies show that that department or that neighborhood. Has a different percentage of a multiple uh multiplication uh ta- basically table. Then that is what it is.
Yeah, I'm just trying to, I'm just trying to get it worked out in my head. And so, and so uh, for those people that are. That haven't really done anything to their property other than just normal maintenance over a protracted period of time. Uh, have not really seen much of a, of an, a change in their taxable value.
No, because we still haven't, even as it stands here today, in uh March of twenty twenty-two, we haven't even seen our market. Really rebound to the two thousand and seven pre-oh eight crash. So we haven't even come back to that level yet, yes, trust me.
Well, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe the taxable value can be increased by a percentage statutorily.
Yeah.
Annually. But the taxable value is what you pay your taxes on, unless and until you sell it, that doesn't change.
That's.
And and a reassessment doesn't change.
That's what I was trying to get at.
Him, Mr. Berg going up and and assessing, reassessing it, doesn't change your taxable value.
That's what I was going to try to get at, so.
And so, and so, uh, and and for me, he probably doesn't have to do a reassessment. Uh, other than inspecting the records of sales, because those houses that have changed hands in the last whatever number of years since they've been assessed. Automatically have an upticked assessment, should have, by the, by the price of the sale.
Right, I just didn't want to find.
But he will be doing field assessments on all hundred percent over the next five years. That's part of the problem, because not every resident. Is stand up and pulls permits anytime they pull and improve their, their structures. So.
I was talking about sales, I mean.
Yeah, but I'm saying e- everything.
Don't we give records of that here?
Yeah, yeah.
So automatically, we can up, uptick the taxable value when a sale takes.
Which, which that's a process that I believe Laura and Chris do going through, that we submit to the county equalization department, make sure our records are fine. Um, but really, it's not just a natural derivative. You you hit it on the head, but the state multiplier uh for was what, one point zero zero three this year? So that's the only increase of others than local millages that would have had an impact on their taxable.
The tax, but yeah, tax, uh, yeah.
Taxable. Yes, that's what I think.
This is different percentage.
As long as it doesn't become uncapped upon sale, that's when, if it comes uncapped, that's where your taxable value meets the assessed value. But as long as you've owned that home for.
Yeah, that, that was.
Years and years, your assessed value.
That was just.
And my point is that those two things should happen at the price of a sale.
Right. Well, see, I didn't want to find a property owner next door to somebody who'd sold their home for, you know, for a large adjustment. For the, for the neighbor to get adjusted accordingly. So that doesn't going to happen.
But I I can tell you personally, my assessed value has gone up significantly because of what you were talking about. The the sales in the neighborhoods, but my taxable value is still.
Right, because you've.
So if the field inspector goes out and discovers that these people unbeknownst us put up a big hole bar. Added in addition to their house, will that increase your bits?
Yes, absolutely. And and for example, um, border review, uh, two structures and are an agricultural zone property. Uh, originally at the point of purchase, two structures, um, under agricultural, you don't have to pull permits for agricultural facilities. Which is a misnomer, because then in that, that mindset, if I can build a barn and I don't have to pull a permit. True as oh it may be, we can tax that barn. Uh, so when you go from two buildings to eleven. And you wonder why your taxable value went up, it's going to be eye opening, uh, like I said. And I've, I've forecasted this to the border review, that we are going to have a lot more people coming in, and rightfully so, getting those explanations. Because a lot of people. Have a hard time looking at assessed value versus taxable value, and which weighs up, which weighs down. Uh, this is uh on behalf of the township, uh, and as one member of the personnel committee. Um, this, this way for is the most sound way. Um, with the variables unknown, uh, to other proposals internal is, one, I think we should all be cognizant of the fact of. How hard it is to find employees as a baseline, but then you need to find employees in a a niche market such as assessing. Um, that's probably even more, more difficult than finding qualified staff for a fire department. This is, it's.
It's a pretty small pool.
It's a small pool, and Mr. Berg has uh the top tier license in the entire state. Any other comments from Cash or?
Oh, I looked at every option thoroughly, and this is the best option.
I I suppose from an economical standpoint, from, from a township perspective, um. There will no doubt be many properties that their taxable value will go up. Because of various changes, et cetera, et cetera. So that sixty dollars, I suppose, to some extent, can be absorbed. Uh, by way of, uh, by way of reassessing properties, uh, and those that need to be adjusted. Got, got to pay for those adjustments.
I guess I have a question, just kind of reading through and just, I guess mostly regarding communication. So when the transition takes place, I mean, there's going to be mail coming here. You know, um, if phone calls come in, and then how, how all of that is going to be handled moving forward, or when customers come in. Just, I don't, how, how is that?
So we've, we've had those discussions as well. Um, everything's, like I said, formally stated with his. Adoption of the the tax rules of of various other municipalities, even within this county, he's got it pretty much down to a well-oiled machine. Uh, he uses B S and A, so there's a linear uh line of communication where he actually updates. He will actually send us back on a monthly basis, updated rules uh that will be imported and exported uh accordingly. Um, phone calls directly get forwarded right to his office. Um, and then in person, w- we as any staff, if somebody, any member of the public says, I would like to look at my property card, it is their right. To pull up the hard copy of that card. Uh, that would be probably looking at having that discussion with existing staff of. Getting familiar with the ordering sequence, because that's all, if somebody requests it, which we don't have a huge number, but it is a customer service component. Um, he wants to be the point of contact, so if somebody comes in, we can show them their card and if they have further. Request for questions, then here's the, your point of contact. And that's actually kind of, we look at a hybrid scenario.
So it's part of his base fee is to have those customer contacts.
Yeah.
Resident country.
Yeah.
So he'll, he would come into the office here if he had to meet with somebody.
Yeah, he'll probably be doing appointments.
Yeah.
Hopefully, most of us will be emailed and over the phone.
Oh, yeah. So it's, and we we look at this because this is obviously something that we should always give consideration is customer service because that is our only function here is serving our taxpayers. Um, but when we spoke to other municipalities about what it looked like through the transitional phase, um, everybody said, you know, at first we had very similar questions. Um, in a matter of no time at all, everything worked out fine and they're extremely happy. So it's definitely was one of the stones that we looked at a hybrid scenario. Uh, but yes, trust me.
So is, what is Ruth going to be doing?
Ruth is by, and that's why we have this meeting to to run concurrent with four different timelines. Uh, we've already started the conversation with her bargaining unit, um, that her position would no longer be here at the township.
So there will be nobody here to answer phones that will go direct to.
Directly to him.
I had just a question, but in reference to respond to inquiries with the three business days, will they get a person when they call or are they going to recording or what will they get?
Uh, what what they do, they have one answering scenario where what's what's your name, contact number, and then a a person calls you back.
But they say they got the three days to do that.
And I've I, he hasn't missed a timeline in terms of my communication. I I don't have a a super secret Batman signal to go directly to him. It's been pretty, pretty quick internal.
But somebody does answer the phone. It doesn't go to a sound recording.
I I have had a photo recording and I've also had it where someone has picked it out.
But when it's gone to a recording, I've gotten that call back from Alan that same day. So, but it's the same.
Over the years, I've had a lot of communication with this company too, and I've always gotten from return calls and emails.
Because I think our citizens deserve it.
Yeah, by all means.
Item five of the contract, travel expenses. Uh, this is a understood to be normal and expected workload under the, under the agreement X, the inspection addendum. Do you know if item number five plays into the addendum, the inspection addendum, or or is the sixty dollars per parcel inclusive of travel expenses?
To my knowledge, it's inclusive of that.
That would make sense to me, but I would like.
Section, section five was inherent to if there's a need for travel to, let's say, Lansing for a tribunal in person, then that would be the the last sentence of that, an irregular.
Oh, well, yeah, which would be the the Lansing trip. But yeah, and so, I mean, I took that to mean, I took this sixty dollars per parcel to mean that all expenses are included within that sixty dollars, which would include travel expenses.
So. Because he has his own group of, I think, five or six field inspectors that have worked for him for several years, and they have a well-oiled machine. And so hitting a twenty percent marker in our municipality will be the first time that we've hit twenty percent. Um, and then five years' time, maintaining that course of action, we will actually have a baseline of a true taxable value within our municipality.
And then they'll just keep up with it annually.
And the charge would actually could go down.
Yes.
So after five years.
Fifty percent.
Did it end them probably go.
Potential. So.
So as as I see it, this roughly two hundred and forty one thousand dollars, which is makes up that twenty percent, right? That other twenty percent.
Well, the the two hundred and forty one was the internal option. Two hundred and fifteen thousand is the contract before you.
Oh, okay, excuse me.
Yeah.
All right, so really, at the end of the day, when we look at our budget for assessing, is that about two hundred and nineteen thousand dollars roughly? Sort of becomes a bit of a wash.
It does, but then we also strategized the the guru of Excel.
Yeah.
It's extra because she is.
We're going to have P T L this year payout for Chris.
Okay.
Yeah.
Um, John and.
So we'll have a misnomer of a slight uptick because of the payout to P T L.
And plus, we'll get uh, we'll move closer and closer to an actual, an accurate assessment.
Yes.
So, all right.
Trustee Paul, did you have?
Yeah, where do I see two hundred and nineteen thousand?
Two hundred and fifteen.
It's just, I have.
Yeah.
Their estimate of current costs or in house.
There's a hundred and twenty dollars, hundred and twenty.
The one one service fee.
Yeah. So the two hundred and fifteen was broke out in an email of.
The four hundred and twenty.
Inspection agreement. So the assessing service, there's three, three different components to this. Uh, the assessing role and that service is a hundred and twenty thousand dollars annual.
Oh, I see.
Inspection agreement, and that's where you get that twenty percent. That's eighty five thousand dollars a year for years one through five, which on year six, moving forward, that has the potential to decrease fifty percent. And then he put in this for miscellaneous costs postage um of ten thousand estimated. So that's where he came up with just an estimated cost and was doing.
This again.
By our parcel number, because he knew our parcels when we started having this conversation.
So the mailing of tax bills.
We already, that still stays.
That's.
That costs.
We'll still be paying the county debt.
Well, that's an addition. So, okay, so I'm talking about the postage for one, but that'll be paid for then out of my office versus assessing.
But you stay right where it's at.
But but that's not in this. The poster just. Okay. I have one more question. Under document delivery, um, the company who is Mr. Burke receives correspondence via email, fax, mail, in-person deliveries are not accepted unless coordinated by Burke through the municipality locations. Any documents submitted to the municipality here or their representatives must be stamped, envelope copied, and digitally transmitted transmitted to the company within three business days. Whose job is that?
I think that's what we need to work out internally.
Okay, okay. I just wanted just to make sure.
I mean, I got, we we got a similar scenario of attention Alan Burke, but city of Opina. I I get that three-day marker when I hand delivered it to the city. I mean, but yeah, it's just.
I just, just, yeah.
We we have a scanner, right?
Yeah, yeah. We have a scanner, but I'm not going to open up an enclosed envelope that's not in our municipality in that.
Oh, right.
Yeah, I mean, I'm a team player, but I don't think I need to be that much of a team player. Yeah. So are there any other questions? Um, like I said, we, this was, there is no loss on any stone in this topic that we haven't looked at.
And I would just say, if I may, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Uh, in my work with the county in in context, I had Mr. Berg's operation, that's Tim's stuff, we're always very positive and professional. I I think it's our, I think it's our best option, frankly. So there will not be any personnel in that office, it'll just be final captains, per se.
As it looks right now.
And somebody in this office will be able to hold those cards.
Yeah, and I and I do it often anyways, just so, because if you have access to the assessing, um, you can pull up, I do it all the time with site plan review, and if somebody has a question, I can print off tax IDs, but we we do have existing staff that could easily just say, what's your parcel number? And here, you can sit here and look at it. If you want any copies, then go that way and still perform that.
Online too.
Yeah, and they have, there's more than than one way to skim that, yeah, but yeah.
Is Miss Brown's last day the first as well, or?
But that's one of the four concurrent timelines, Laura, that we'll be addressing post this meeting and this action.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, where that's.
I didn't know.
Still.
So you waiting for a motion or we have one?
Uh, we don't have a motion. I would entertain one.
Want a word, what you want.
Uh, to the recommendation of the personnel committee to move forward with contract for services with assessing for Berg assessing and consulting.
Actually, I think under the rules that the committee's recommendation is a motion just needs to be supported, but yes, I support that.
We've, we've, we've always done it this.
I can make that motion. I'll make that motion.
Yeah, we have a motion on the table.
Want to support that.
I will.
Got the support before the.
Yeah.
And that is a wonderful thing.
It's because of board members on the committee.
Yeah, so we have a a motion and support to move forward with the contract of services with Mr. Berg for the assessing department, uh, further discussion. I think we we did a pretty good job of having an open conversation. Uh, that being said, I'll roll call this.
Trustee Laffin.
Yes.
Clerk Plovich, yes. Treasurer Hillary Summers.
Yes.
Trustee Crow.
Yes.
Trustee Reiner.
Yes.
Trustee Pauli.
Yes.
Supervisor Skibby.
Yes. Uh, moving forward, uh, this is the second opportunity for public comment. If there's any public comment, we have none in person. Get this down.
Take this down.
At the last meeting, we did an asset disposal request for some different items. I would like to get this old smokehouse trailer out of here, but I would like to see, there's been a couple folks that I have expressed interest, uh, use it as an old puppy camp or whatever they want to do. We would take an offer if we could, is that permissible for this court?
We do it in this.
You can't do it in this format. I'll catch up with you on the flip side. We can address that as long as it's not a hunting camp in the charter township of Opina. Hey, giddy up. Oh, come on, Haas. Uh, is there any public comment online? Again, this is the last opportunity for public comment. Seeing no public comment, uh, discussion for the betterment of the board, yes, Lord.
Uh, my son, our email that we received a request from South Bay for um funding regarding our budget. Um, we're pretty much done with our budget for this fiscal, so.
We are, are we having a public hearing?
On the twenty.
So I would.
That would be the business that would be conducted at that point. It was an extremely late request. Obviously, we started this process November, um, so, but that can be a conversation for our subsequent budget.
And I would just request that it be submitted sooner in the future.
Any other discussions amongst the board? If not, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So.
We have a motion to adjourn by trustee Laffin.
Support.
It's been supported by clerk Plovich. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of adjournment signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Meeting adjourned at twelve oh four. Thank you very much.